Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners, meeting to order on Monday, August 15, 2022. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. I do believe that we have our first item, the Associate Planner, from regarding ODOT, the noise variance. Do we have someone online, Stephanie? It says Rachel Vickers, Associate Planner.
I've got Anthony and Will.
Okay, maybe one of the... Okay, sounds like a good plan. Yes, we can. Thank you, Anthony, for joining us.
Thank you. I'm subbing in for Rachel. She's out sick today, so I'll be providing you with an overview of the ODOT Oregon Department of Transportation noise permit, if that's okay.
That would be fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this particular work session, again, is an Oregon Department of Transportation or ODOT noise permit for nighttime work to, let's see, the work will begin just south of E Avenue in Terrebonne on US Highway 97 and continue and complete just north of F Avenue, also in Terrebonne. The work will occur over the course of four nights from September 19 through the 23rd. It involves pavement coring, some geotechnical drilling, along with soil sampling in advance of the installation of some retaining walls along the east and western edges of the right-of-way there. The purpose of this work session is just to provide the Commissioners with that background in advance of the public hearing that has been noticed and scheduled for Wednesday, next Wednesday, August 24th. The purpose of the permit is because ODOT needs to or wants to do the work at night from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, and so we've done a public notice. To date, there have been no public comments received, and so with that, I am available for any questions.
Thank you so much for joining us today. I appreciate that. Do we have any questions from the Commissioners?
Pretty light item to think about. We're prepping for the public hearing on this. It's good to let people know that this could hap, you know, it is going to happen and it could be impactful, you know, boring in the, in the right-of-way. I'm sure there'll be some traffic going through at that time at night, too, so, yeah, you know, I can see the value of this is really trying to just let folks know that this is going to happen around the area, and we'll get to that next Wednesday.
Great.
Anthony, so this is still up the hill from the, from the Lower Bridge interchange. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So...
It's almost in what I would consider Terrebonne proper.
Uh huh.
The, sort of the level area of Terrebonne.
Right. And you mentioned retaining walls, and, I mean, is this, this is just relatively minor, minor work along 97 up from the, up from where the really big project is going to happen?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Well, we can ask more questions on Wednesday if ODOT will be here for it, too. Just a little bit technology, or, you know, the demonstrated need about what they're doing, because I do know there's quite an elevation change from that roadway down to those, those parking lot areas, so they're probably, they probably wanted to do this for many years, but it'd be good to hear from them.
Yeah, and I believe we will have ODOT, a representative from ODOT, next Wednesday.
Okay.
So not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday.
Right, the 24th.
That's correct.
All right. Sounds like an excellent plan, and hopefully Rachel will be back next Wednesday, and thank you for stepping in today.
You're welcome. You guys have a good afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is our review of state of the county presentation, and I believe we just had a new one put on our desk.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator, and this afternoon we have review of a draft presentation for the Board's State of the County Presentation with the Ben Chamber, which is scheduled for tomorrow night. So last-
Tomorrow night? No, I'm joking, yeah.
It's my blood pressure. Yes, so we talked last week about an initial draft, and I've made some of, most all of the changes that we discussed. A few areas I wanted to check back in with you on today and get your feedback, and then also just opening it up to the Board to discuss logistics of how formal you'd like to be in terms of assigning slides amongst the Commissioners versus a more open approach, and certainly staff differs to you on how you'd like to, to plan and present this presentation, but we held this time as a chance for you to have that discussion about how you'd like to give the presentation tomorrow.
Okay, and we have, you say, what, 45 minutes?
That is correct.
And are we supposed to do the presentation in 45 and then 10 for questions?
Correct, and there will be a facilitator. Someone from the Chamber will be facilitating and will welcome and kind of transition you between those two parts of the presentation.
Okay. That sounds like it.
All right.
Excellent plan.
If the Board would like, I can kind of walk through just with an eye to things that have changed since you saw this presentation last, and we could kind of lean towards logistics. Would that work?
That'd be excellent.
Okay, perfect. So Slide 4, which is the slide that has mountains in the background and the Hot Topic slide, I just reordered that text to match kind of the order in which you'll be walking through items within the presentation. And then the ARPA slide that immediately follows, we've updated the allocation amount to match current allocation levels. When we spoke last, Commissioner Chang, you had asked about kind of building out a more robust description of each of these funding categories, and when I tried to do that, I was struggling a little bit with sort of readability of the slide and how that might work, so I think I can do that. I might need to add a secondary ARPA slide to get there, and so just wanted to kind of get your feedback on the direction you'd like to take this. I certainly understand that these categories are really high-level, and so we probably do want there to be a little bit more depth, but it's kind of how we want to approach that in one slide versus two.
I think the depth could be just in the, the speaker notes for, for the slide as opposed to on the slide itself.
Okay, that's perfect, and that was kind of another thing that I had thought about but wanted to check in, so we'll add that to speaker notes for the ARPA slide.
And those percentages, Whitney, they're not right. I mean, I, anyway, I did the childcare, and if you take 20.6% times 38,399,000, it's, or I put 38, you know, the total that the funding we're getting, it's like 7.9 million, and I don't believe we have allocated even with that contingency, 7.9 million.
Okay, I'll double-check those, and I'll touch base with Dan again on this-
Right.
-before you give the presentation tomorrow night, and we'll just make sure that the percentages are accurate and-
Right, if we back into them-
Yeah.
They need to be correct.
Definitely.
I mean, that's the one I know that's off, and I didn't go through the rest of them, but I, I will if it doesn't work out.
Okay, yeah, and I can definitely give the Board the backup documentation, too, for what we're using to feed this and sort of what's being grouped into which subcategory, so, but we'll, we'll cross-reference and make sure-
Okay.
So I think of this spreadsheet as kind of the reference point, you know, that's our big numbers, and the numbers we've allocated from, we've had a version of a spreadsheet the whole time. So if we're not using that same spreadsheet, maybe that's why there's a difference, but, yeah, we can just have-
Well, I know we added 25,000 for childcare at the Sisters Park and Rec, but that's 25,000, so.
I mean, before we made our six-plus billion dollar investment, we, we did very early do, do a $1 million allocation to the Little Kids Project, so it may, it may head up to more than seven, 7 million. Could be in the seven and a half range.
No, this says 7.9, if you do the math, so.
So, yeah, as I say, the spreadsheet behind it, and then I think we'll be-
Right, we just need to-
Understand what the numbers are.
Check it, check the numbers again, please.
Maybe, maybe it's 20.6 million of, 20.6% of 37.7 million.
That could be actually the date of this. So what I have in the, and again, not to drag the Board into the logistics, but it's 7.7 is what's feeding that graph, and that matches the spreadsheet that came from Dan that includes the 25,000 for Sisters Park and Rec. So I'm happy to print this and make sure that whichever way it is presented, we all have a good sense of what's feeding those percentages. All right. Let's see here. Sorry, I had to switch a few screens there. So moving into healthy people, we did a little bit of reordering of these slides. We've added St. Vincent's Place to this slide, making sure Cleveland Commons is called out on this slide as well. Commissioner Dare, you caught the total for the Bethlehem Inn project the last time we reviewed.
Oh, gosh, thank you.
And then we've added a slide on the Stabilization Center immediately following houselessness. So I'll just go ahead and pause there, because I know we had a little bit of discussion. How is that section feeling to the Board?
The center looks fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, and then moving into safe communities, not a lot of change to wildfire, but some updates, just minor updates to fuels reduction, that slide, and that's a pretty meaty slide. I did trim a little bit just to try to get our text down, and we'll probably add some of what I cut into the speaker notes for this slide, but just trying to kind of make sure that we're sharing all of that great information but not bogging folks down with a ton of text. Any feedback on the fuels reduction or wildfire information slides?
We don't have the fire-free date yet. It's too bad we don't.
We don't, but it is on the list of things that we'll be coordinating on as we head into the fall.
Okay. I've been handing out the fire-free cards last week, and one of the people that I handed it to actually lost his house in paradise.
Oh, wow.
I know, so, and he, you know, he's happy he's living here now, but I think a lot of those people did move up here, remember? We've seen, I know I've met several that have moved to Lepine, so he actually had moved to Redmond.
And then immediately following a few slides on the landfill siting process, and not really much change to those slides since the last time we spoke. Did work with Chris Doty to update the photo on the transportation slide, so that's a little bit more bend-centric. Go ahead, Commissioner.
One thought on the new landfill, so this, right in the middle, it says the County's working with an advisory committee, maybe we say the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, so, because it's in, you know, people that have followed it for 20 years know that we didn't have one for a while, but it is the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, so.
That's a great catch. Community planning, that slide, we've added the CDD webpage so that folks can go to that page and get more information about the different processes that they may, may be interested in learning more about. And then as we transition into housing, stability, and supply, I've made some updates to the affordable housing slide, trying to really make this section more bend-centric through these updates, and adding a slide on your, the Board's investment in the Workforce Housing Initiative, but really welcome feedback from the Board on this section in terms of if there are additions that you'd like to see come back in, or if there's content we're missing that we should add.
And it's great, because the Commons just got their full funding, so that's nice that they're, that's up there. The core funding, we also did half a million dollars for core. Is that, would that be too much information? I can, I mean, it fits all nicely now.
No, we can certainly add it, and Commissioner, or Chang, I see you kind of flipping back Oasis Village. I don't, that was one of the sort of less bend-centric things that I pulled out of this slide, but I'm happy to push, to put it back in. It's just really the Board's preference.
My, my, my question was whether we should put Cleveland Commons here, or whether we should just keep it on the houselessness slide, and if you pulled it off of this slide, then you could put the, the core project in there.
Yep, that's great. Does that work for the Board if I sort of flip that and then add the core?
Sure.
Okay.
This Cleveland Commons, I mean, it's, it will be subsidized to a degree that, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it affordable housing. I, I mean, it is-
Permanent supportive housing.
It'll be, yeah.
Yeah.
It's permanent supportive housing, for the hardest-to-house people.
Correct. That's great. I can make those up. Are there any other changes to that section that you'd like to see?
And this, this other, this Housing Works item, this is, this is not for Simpson. This is for the-
It's for the property over on 27th.
Yeah.
Which, yeah.
Is that right?
Need to pull up, let me pull Christie's note up, because that's where I pulled that.
Yeah, so the sales price for property was $1 million, so.
So the, if we pull Cleveland Commons out of here, then we could make it a double, or, well, actually, because Commissioner Dare was talking about putting the Core Land Trust dollar investment in here, not the, okay. I mean, you, we could, well, okay, so the Housing Works in ARPA investment, that was for a Redmond project, so, yeah, the core, maybe it's that, maybe the core is, the core ARPA investment is the one that belongs here. That would be good.
Okay.
Can't catch everything, but.
It was quite extensive in trying to, there's been a lot of work done in this area, so I think-
Yeah.
...in terms of highlighting what's specific to Bend, but certain-
Well, if we're, when we're speaking, we say, "And there's more around the county." These are Bend-specific.
Okay. And then moving into service delivery, I did add a fair slide right after capital projects, and then in the Get Involved slide flipped jobs and advisory committees per feedback from the Board, which was great. It's a good suggestion.
Whitney, we still don't know what the add-ons for the county fair are?
I, no, I met with Jeff Friday, and we didn't, he was still waiting for final numbers and planning to send an update to the Board.
Okay. Is Candy Botham no longer working here in Redmond?
I don't know. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Dare, and that may be my gap in knowledge. Are the add-ons specific to the auction?
Right, those are all 4H, you know, the FFA 4H add-ons-
I didn't-
That, they should have, somebody should have them totaled by now. I mean, it was 1.6 last year, and it would be, and there are a lot of kids that were there from Bend, so it would be really nice to know if we beat the 1.6 million.
Okay.
I, I, I feel that we probably did.
Let me see if I can track that down, because we were speaking about fair numbers specifically and not about the auction, so let me follow up and see what I can find out.
We did have, I think, 10 fewer stairs, which are big-ticket items, but there were, I think, 30 more pigs.
Okay, yeah, let's see what we-
And then there was that $30,000 turkey.
I did see that.
I kept thinking they were just buying it for 1,300, but no, they, it was a $30,000 turkey.
All right, so that really takes us through the primary edits to the presentation since the prior draft. Did the Board want to discuss kind of the flow of how you'd like to present?
Okay.
I'm open on, I'm open on assignments, but I do think it would be good for us to have assigned slides.
It'll help.
And I, I would really like us to try to be disciplined about, about presenting concise information so we can get through the full presentation in 45 minutes and protect those 10 or 15 minutes of question-and-answer time.
Okay. I think the Board will have roughly about two minutes a slide is probably a good gauge. The transition slides obviously won't take that long, but I think that's a general kind of rough ballpark to-
So how many slides are there?
There are 24.
Okay.
The big question is, who's clicking?
Well, that's, that's 48 minutes right there.
I know, but I-
Some of them are pretty fast.
Have faith in you on the transition slides.
Yep, yep. Some of them are just next.
My understanding from the Chamber staff is that they are going to be set up to moderate and also to, I think they'll have AV folks on site that will be running through. I will ask specifically about the clicker. I know Nick will be there, so we could, you know, put Nick in charge of that technology or Commissioner. Certainly, all of you have done that as well, so whatever your preference.
Well, and just a little bit of clarity, because we've been in that spot where all three of us are standing up there, and then we look around the room, and then, you know, somebody, mentioned somebody in there, and it's like, oh, what do we do here? So just that little bit.
Well, if Nick's in charge, when we're over, we're at two minutes, he can just click it on, and we'll get-
Moving on, moving on.
I think they've talked enough. Okay.
How do you feel about doing that, Nick? Keep us, keep us on, keep us on task.
Sure.
Okay. So we really could kind of, if there are specific project areas or focus areas that an individual Commissioner would like to speak to, that could be one way we approach this, or we could just take it kind of from start to finish and sort of assign as we go, whatever the Board's preferences is.
Let's flip through it and see how they just fall into place.
Okay.
Is my thought.
All righty.
So do you want me to just, are, we're just going to say, the first page underneath the header page, do you want me to say, "I'm Commissioner Dare, Commissioner DeBone, Commissioner Chang"? Is that, is that enough for that page?
I would like to, yeah.
Or does everyone want to say their-
I'd just like to say my name and, you know, just make sure the microphone works. This is just the moment to get started, so we don't need to give a life history at that moment, but-
All right.
I'd like to say hi.
Okay, so we'll all say hi.
Does that sound good, Commissioner Chang?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll just, you know, just introduction.
If you could spend 10 minutes introducing ourselves.
I know, exactly, but, yeah, let's, I'll be disciplined. Tony DeBone, honor to be serving, or whatever, I'll just say something like that.
All right.
Really, this slide could probably stay in or come out. It's the Board's preference, but this really was, this slide that speaks to growth regionally was an attempt to acknowledge kind of where we are at this point in time in providing services, so, again, kind of the Board's call on if you'd like to keep it there, but it's how we frame the budget message in other, you know, similar presentations, and I feel like it's an important note, although those who live here certainly are aware of our region's growth, continued growth.
It's always nice to repeat it. Are we saying that it's like 118,000, starting in 2,000, or what is that number supposed to be?
I will pull out the back, like, the data part of this slide, and I'll make sure that that's included in speaker notes, so that-
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Who's talking this one?
I can do that one. I don't care.
So one of the notes here, then, is that last segment, between the last two dots, that's acceleration. You know, that's, looks like it's, you know, the, it's expected to even accelerate from the last 10 years of growth.
Yep, and I pulled this data out of a presentation that was one that I, so I'll go back and look at that original source of data and include that all in the speaker notes when we finalize this draft.
It, it looks like acceleration, except that the, the time increments along the bar are not the same length, right? So like, the space between 2010, 2018 and 2021 is as big as the space between 2000 and 2010.
And that's kind of a function of the software we're using to pull this graph together is more focused on, but it's a, yeah, we can also pull in a graphic from Excel into this.
Yeah, I mean, we, we may not want to emphasize, like, it's accelerating if, if the, if the actual, like, yeah, the, the run versus the rise is different between, you know, these four segments.
So what are they saying the population is in '22 this year?
I don't, that's not a data point that we pulled in, and I don't, Nick, do you know off the top of?
I'm looking it up right now.
Okay.
I know, I was just wondering, because I always, I know it's over 200,000, but is it like 204,000? If we're saying we're going to go up in eight years to, what is that, like 45, 50, 50, 48,000 in eight, eight more years? I guess you can just get us some background data.
Yep, I will, and we'll make sure that we're using Portland State, right, is who we-
Yes.
And again, just, yeah, we'll dig in on that. Okay, so Commissioner Dare will finalize and give you a pull-out on data on that.
Okay, thank you.
And then hot topics.
So this is more just introductory slide.
Yep.
So Commissioner Dare, if you want to just roll through, make some statements-
The next one?
On that slide, and then say, this is, these are the topics of the day, maybe not even say them, just say, this is the scope of what we're talking about today.
Okay.
Because then we could just roll to the next slide.
Okay.
And then ARPA.
And, yeah, you might, since you're into the percentages, are you gonna, did you want that slide?
I can give it up. I'm doing the first two, that's fine. I'm okay.
Or we alternate, maybe somebody else does.
I just want to make, the percentages are good.
I'd be happy to cover that slide.
Okay, that's fine.
With, with some notes.
Yes, you're going to have extensive, we'll give you the spreadsheet, too, just as background to prep, so, yeah.
So one of the other notes that I picked up- So one of the other notes that I picked up during our CFO interviews is that there's some counties that utilized a lot of those dollars internally, you know, just for, for other revenue that didn't come in or whatever, and basically that, that's what we did not do. You know, we were able to just send the dollars out the door to a lot of partners, so. I just acknowledge that would be one of my notes. If you want to pick that up and acknowledge that, I'd appreciate it. Look at that beautiful, healthy people slide. That's a great photo of all of us.
Yep, I thought that worked for this. Community health, or just.
Oh, well, let's talk about, so, so this is going to be content, American Rescue Plan, Commissioner Chang, because then I'm looking at the next one, it's really an introductory slide again.
And we could do this where one of you takes a whole segment of, someone takes healthy people, someone takes safe communities, and you could kind of, in that way, have about two to three slides at a time, or we could roll them and you could do those, each of you has a slide within healthy people. It's really the board's preference.
Yeah, because then there's like four slides that all fit together here.
Right.
Happy to do it, however.
Okay. All right, whose turn is it?
Uh, well, yeah, no, I'm just kind of looking. So, uh.
Got the ARPA slide, that's pretty meaty, so I'm happy to let someone else go next.
Yeah. And then, yeah, so then I'll dump into healthy people, it'll be four slides.
Okay.
Or three, three content slides.
Okay. Is there anything specific in that range of slides that you'd want us to pull out in terms of background data or talking points, Commissioner DeBone?
Okay, so I'm putting my healthy people hat on right now, so we're recruiting for Health Director position, so maybe that's right at that first slide of community health. And it acknowledges to support public and behavioral health, so that'll be some other words right here, you know, this, when you think of health, you kind of think of two sides of the house, plus the administration of all the dollars and grants.
And the ARPA investment for safe parking is actually in Redmond, so do, should we take that off?
Yeah, we definitely can.
So, yeah, at the houselessness slide.
The Bethlehem in Redmond is also in Redmond.
Right, but Bethlehem does exist in Bend, so it's a continuation of what they're, they're doing with their track record.
So as I look at this slide, I could say there's a lot of moving parts, you know, interviewed for Coordinated Office Director. Cleveland Commons is going to be a wonderful permanent supportive housing, which, do we have any other permanent supportive housing like this? And then, I guess, when I say that, you know, who, who's running Cleveland Commons? Who's, you know, the long-term subsidized support for that? I don't have a feel for it.
I can definitely.
I know Housing Works is building it, but is that different than other Housing Works projects?
My impression is that we're going to be doing that with Neighbor Impact.
Yeah, so I don't know for sure. You know, because Housing Works builds apartments, there's.
They, they won't, they, they won't, Housing Works doesn't do the wraparound services, which is what.
Yeah, so I don't know, I mean, if it's Neighbor Impact, I guess we can call and ask, what is that?
We will, we will definitely provide a substantial amount of, of services in, at Cleveland Commons.
Deschutes County Behavioral Health you're referring to. And I was going down the path of who's, if it's a permanent supportive housing, and it's not a federal, you know, Section 8 voucher, or whatever the terminologies are, is there other funding in there somewhere just to keep people in their place? So, I, I guess, I guess whoever we could talk to, I don't know.
We can try and track down.
Views, people will know that, because that's what they do, I think.
Yep, nope, we can follow up, and I'll follow up with you.
Yeah, so if you can keep track of that, I'll do it to do also, I can call somebody and learn about it, so that would be a way to go. We'll both be able to learn.
Did we do a press release, Whitney, do you know, on the well money that we have offered to the public through Neighbor Impact?
I just actually got an email over the weekend about that, about coordinating on that.
Because Neighbor Impact is not, I was talking to Janet Abus, and they, she had no idea that the money was coming through the county. So, I would really like to have a press release out as soon as possible.
Yes, it looks like they just reached out, I got an email on Saturday, and they're ready to start coordinating on media outreach about the availability of well loans and rebates, so we'll be sure to partner, and I know that was one of the board's asks when that came before you, so we'll be certain to partner with them on that and keep you updated on sort of the timing of that release.
Okay.
So, yeah, so for this houselessness slide, I'll definitely make sure to have, you know, just some concise points for each one, because it can go in a hundred ways, so I'll do my homework on that. And then stabilization.
And you might, you know, to, you know, to, before jumping into the specific projects, you might, you might just frame it by giving people a sense of the kind of the scope of the problem in, in Deschutes County and, you know, our great concern, you know, great desire to reduce homelessness.
Well, and this may be an opportunity, I mean, maybe we need to share this or something, because remember, this is that scenario. I, when I talk to some, you know, there's different views of this, totally different views of this. And, I mean, you, we may just want to split this slider, you know, I can hand it off to you for a few moments and you can share the rest of the story.
I'm happy to let you, you cover it, but.
Well, you're going to want to fix some of the words, I say, probably, is my thought. You're going to be like, well, that's not the way I see it, and I'm not pushing your button here, I'm just pointing out, it may be your opportunity to speak if.
Sure that you will not say it the way that.
Yeah.
That said, I'm happy to let you.
Yeah, we'll go. And then if there's questions afterwards, we can, we'll come back to it or whatever. Okay. And then stabilization center, we can get through pretty quick. 7525 was mentioned, Commissioner Chang saying 25% in a homeless, 75% is truly our community.
Could I do the stabilization center one then?
Oh.
Do you care?
Well.
I mean, does it matter?
No, if you want to finish up, that's fine, because that'd be the third slide for.
Yes, I did get to meet Holly's mother yesterday. I went to the park and Holly was giving her presentation, so it was really nice.
Wonderful. So you want the stabilization center?
If you don't mind.
That's fine, no, it's good.
If I have less than 90 seconds. I know, he'll shut me off.
Are you going to mention her mom?
Well, she moved here from Texas.
There you go.
And she had a cute little long-haired dachshund, I believe, so, anyway.
Okay, so transitioning into safe communities, we have our wildfire information and then our fuels reduction slides.
I'd be happy to take up at least a piece of these, these slides. I, I don't know whether anyone else wants.
Yeah, so maybe. Yep. So for wildfire information and fuel reduction, we're talking about?
Yes.
Because then it switches to landfill and solid waste after that, so there's just kind of two slides on the same general topic.
Two slides.
Mm-hmm. Well, and I'll, I could talk either one too.
If I could just say something about fire-free, that's, that's kind of one of my babies. Maybe if you could put it at the bottom or something. If you don't mind.
Uh, how about?
I, I think ideally we would just have one person go over each slide, and I mean, that's going to help us with the, with the flow and keeping.
Okay. How, how, for the safe communities, I could just, I'd like to maybe make that a little bit more, so referring to the citizens voted in 2006 for permanent rates for jail operations in rural patrol, which is what we're working with now, so we have a funded public safety system in the sheriff's office.
Wait, where are we at?
Just the safe communities introduction slide. But, I mean, that's just, because that, that's influential in our community. You know, there's counties all over, like, how did you do that? Well, it was a moment in time, right before a great recession. But, you know, that'd be the message, just the fact that we have public safety funded.
I mean, I.
Resources for.
The sheriff's, the sheriff's office is certainly a central piece of our safe communities discussion, but, I mean, we, we also want to talk about 911, and we want to talk about community justice, and, you know, we may even want to talk about behavioral health, so. I, I wouldn't want, I, I mean, if this was, if this was just a sheriff's office slide, it would say sheriff's office, it wouldn't say safe communities.
I would like, I would like some statement to be made about safe communities, between the sheriff's office funding, 911, if you could come up with some kind of catch-all, Whitney, that covers all of our responsibilities.
Yeah, so as I say, back to the same concept, so this would be a little bit more substantive slide.
Right.
And just some kind of statements about the scope. Well, and then, you know, I mean, this is a dramatic photo of a helicopter drop, and right in the background there, and we can hopefully say that we're not in that situation, but we're taking it day by day right now. Yes, exactly.
One way that we could kind of take that concept and apply it across the presentation, if it works for the board, is you could look, use these transitional slides to talk about core service delivery through our departments, and then within the slides that follow, you're kind of highlighting key initiatives or programs that are, you know, specific to those, those departments that provide those services, so I can kind of try to do that throughout, so that we don't feel like we have a representation within public safety that we don't have in health or in another program area, so I can try to have that be a little more consistent, and then the board can choose to use it or not, but you'll have it if you want it.
Well, so then I was thinking I could, so Commissioner Dare would.
Transition slides become substance slides.
Well, just a statement, you know, a statement or two. So Commissioner Dare would finish up stabilization center. I'm offering, you know, just make a few sentences on the introduction of.
Right.
Public safety.
Yeah, I asked Whitney to do that.
As long as it's more comprehensive, not about the sheriff's lobby.
Okay, so Commissioner DeBone on the transition, but now substance slide, and then into wildfire information.
Okay.
Commissioner Dare, do you want the entire fuels reduction slide, or?
Oh, I just wanted, no, I could do the wildfire information, because I could be a perfect example, when the fire was by me and I was not connected. How embarrassing could that be? So, yes.
I could also probably slide fire-free to this slide, just to kind of keep it as a, I mean, I think it'll work, and then.
Oh, sweet, okay, if you could do that.
On the secondary, the secondary one is pretty robust.
Okay, if you slide it over there, that would make me very happy.
Okay, good.
I want you to know how important that is.
We, it's important.
Something we can do tangibly.
Oh, gosh.
Okay, and then fuels reduction minus fire-free.
I'll, I'll take that one.
Okay. And then landfill siting, two slides there, and this will have information about recycling and composting in the talking points. Chad sent over some great background information on that today.
So, yeah, I want to do one of these slides, either one or. I guess these are kind of, they go together.
I think I'm the only person that picks up at Mirapon and does not want plastic on my clothes, and it's so interesting. Like, I've always tried to opt out of that, and it's, very few people do, but you just take it off normally and throw it away, so, and it's not recyclable, so have you thought of that one yet?
Well, my white shirts would be all dusty by the time I put them in the car and took them back out.
That fast?
Yeah, that's right, the door jamb on my car.
Oh, gosh, okay, well, anyway.
It's right there.
I guess I don't wear white shirts. It's a, it, anyway, recycling is interesting. So, you want to do, what, the first page or this, is, does it go together? The two pages?
It could go either way.
Yeah, no, it definitely.
Kind of goes together.
I'd like to do the first one, if possible, if I hadn't spoken real.
Okay.
So a new landfill, I'll take that one, just to explain, you know, this is an effort, we're focused, let's work together as a team, this is going to be good for the community, long-term cost of operations.
Okay, and so, I can do the second one?
And I guess, yeah, I might even speak over this, though, now I'm looking at the content of it, it says, a solid waste management facility will be the 100-year asset, providing sustainable solutions, so that's kind of the word. Different way of saying the same thing I was just saying.
Well, so then we'll just leave your name on it.
This slide, instead of, instead of it being just headings and text is in the notes, like, basically the entire content of these two slides is on the slide.
Yeah, I can.
Maybe it is just one slide.
Two and use the talking points for slide one.
So it's just one slide? Here we go.
Okay.
Because I know I'd talk right over the second one, I could just see it, yeah.
Let me just make a quick note. And then transportation.
I'll do that one.
And community planning.
I'm happy to talk a little bit about community planning.
Is there any background information, Commissioner Chang, for that, that you'd let, you're good? Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm not going to explain what each one of these things is, I'm just going to kind of talk at a high level and tell people about, you know, they can look into any one of these things.
Okay, great. Affordable housing.
So then this is an introductory slide again, we might be able to slide right through it. And then this will change a little bit, having core on there on the second, the affordable housing one.
So who's going to do that one?
The transition slide is an opportunity to just kind of, again, give people a sense of the scope of the issue, that.
And talk about the statewide land use system, and how it needs to evolve with times?
Um, to, to explain to people that we're having a, a, a housing availability and affordability crisis across the entire country, and, you know, put, put our situation locally.
There's different opinions on if it's a state land use system or not.
Well, the fact that everyone, the fact that all the other states are having the same problem indicates to me that it's not specific to our state land use system, but if you want to talk about that.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm just having fun.
Yeah.
Did you want to do?
I'm not picturing it, I'm not picturing it being a why discussion, just to, to give people a sense of the scope of the.
Did you want to do that affordable housing timeline one, Commissioner Dare?
I do.
Yeah, that's what I figured, so then.
Thank you.
The blue timeline slide, Commissioner Dare, the one that talks about specific projects.
Yes.
And just to.
And then the next one's kind of an ad for the Bend Chamber.
Yes.
Just, if I can go back to slide seventeen quickly, Commissioner.
This one's for Katie Brooks to say.
Go back to what?
Uh, just the slide, the transition slide, did you want that one, Commissioner Chang, or are we going to?
If that sounds okay, to, to kind of give, give some contours to the scope of the problem.
Okay.
I can do that.
And then, go ahead.
Affordable housing, one of the big projects that we don't mention, okay, is in Redmond, and I only mention it because it's starting to gain some steam, is Skyline Village in Redmond, that 40-acre land donation. They're beginning to coordinate with Christie on easements and things of that nature, so that's actually beginning to gain some traction.
The 485 different.
Exactly, yeah.
Opportunities for housing.
Right.
Yeah.
So if we want to mention Skyline Village in Red.
But it is, if we were, if we were trying to go more Bend-centric for the Bend Chamber then.
Yeah.
But that's, that's really significant, that's almost 500 homes, you know, for people. So it's, what is the, what is the first, when is the first time people possibly could move in there? Is that 25 still?
I bet it's 26, but.
Really?
Just because they're beginning to work on it.
Okay, well, it is getting, it's making progress.
Maybe what I can do, and we can kind of, you can just gauge it in the moment, is I could give you a Redmond-specific kind of, and more across the region, and just give you a little bit for each, and you can kind of gauge where we are timing-wise, if you want to.
If you shut me off, then I'll know I can't say it, right?
I'm glad Nick has this, this role and not.
Okay, next.
Microphone control officer.
All right.
It's a great idea.
And then, I'm happy to either take this workforce housing initiative content and meld it into another slide, or we can omit due to time and the number of slides we're at, but just, I had it in my notes as feedback from our first review, so I wanted to make sure it got added in for your feedback.
Is there anywhere where we could compliment them on what they've done about ADUs with their? Is there anywhere where we could compliment them on what they've done about ADUs with their website and everything? Just acknowledge how, um, important that is.
If I'm doing this, how, the, the kind of transition slide and giving a sense of the scope, I could also just say, and we want to thank the Chamber for its work on, you know, on ADUs and Workhouse, um, Workforce Housing Initiative.
Great. Okay, so I'm going to, um, put some of this into those talking points, and this slide will go away. And then service delivery. So, um, does anyone want this transition slide, or should we move straight into capital projects?
Capital projects.
Yeah, no, I'd like to talk about service delivery, just the fact that, you know, eleven hundred FTE, you know, basically a thousand employees, open positions, providing services for everybody, we're an employer just like everybody else, you know, just some of that kind of stuff, if, unless we've said more like that already.
Okay.
So it'd just be a few statements and introduction for service delivery.
And then moving into capital projects?
Well, the fair and rodeo are next. I can't be picky, I have to pick my favorite one out.
There you go.
Capital projects.
Okay.
So do, can I get the fair and rodeo?
Okay.
And I will check on add-ons, I keep building my rodeo and four-H vocabulary, so Commissioner-
You are doing a great job, Whitney. Well, I know, I was actually talking to Roxy, and I said, "Roxy, what if we could get someone to donate saddles next year for the rodeo winners?" I mean, that would be at such a higher level, and if, we had such a tremendous, um, you know, audience at the rodeo this year. Other last night, it had to be the most ever. And even, I think even Friday night was really good, so. It would be great for the participants to know they could, um, they didn't have to go to the Pendleton Roundup and win it to get a saddle.
That's great. Um, and then just final content slide, jobs and volunteer opportunities.
This is a, a great photo, but I wonder if we get involved, we should have lots of pictures of happy people together-
Yeah.
In offices and jobs and-
Yes.
Or maybe, yeah, like those two on the next page, maybe the, maybe the, some photos across the bottom, just like that.
Okay.
Smiling employees.
Or just consolidate them, yeah.
I'm happy to, if you want me to.
Consolidate, get involved in questions, possibly, and then-
Okay.
Make those last two slides one.
Do, do any of you want to cover this get-involved slide, or what do you think of my suggestion that we, we let Nick do it?
That's fine, because then, yeah, you can have your voice be heard, and then you might even be available for a question. That, that would help with the transitioning to questions.
Anybody wants to apply for a job?
If we're, if we're over time, he won't be able to talk.
Yeah, if we're already an hour over, yeah.
You'll have to go, "Well, I blew it, I didn't shut him off fast enough," so.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great, that's very, very helpful. I will make these updates and get this into a format where you have your notes section and a clear delineation of who is going to have what. What is the best timing for the board in terms of, if you get this tomorrow morning, is that too late? Would end of today be better? What, I don't want to give you ample time-
No, that's fine.
Tomorrow's fine.
Okay. I will plan on having these in your boxes tomorrow, and then we'll get a virtual copy over to the Chamber.
So one, one slide per page, note page, where, where the slides in the top half and the box is on the bottom.
And one-
It's the right size to be able to have in my hand.
Okay, and we'll print these single-sided, um, I think that's been a request in the past, so we'll be ready to go. All right, thank you.
I have your detailed population numbers here that I can hand to you, and you can either put them in the notes or wherever you would like them.
Thank you.
So what is the population this year, then, Nick?
In two thousand and twenty-two, our total all Deschutes County is two hundred and seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-one.
So it's almost two hundred and eight, then?
I'm sorry?
It's almost two hundred and eight thousand, then?
Yes, and then the largest share is Bend, a hundred and three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six, or almost a hundred and four. Redmond is, and I can just hand this to you if it's helpful.
Thirty-six thousand is what?
Thirty-seven thousand three forty-two. Sisters is three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven. La Pine is two thousand seven hundred and thirty-six, and our unincorporated county is sixty thousand four hundred and thirty.
Great, thank you so much, that's interesting numbers.
And what you might also want to know is, when it shows the twenty-thirty, so what is that number? That number that they're projecting is two hundred and forty thousand four hundred and forty-six. So where's this going in the short term?
Wow, okay.
I'll give these to Whitney, and we can put these in the notes section.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Okay. So, do we have other items at this moment?
I was able to do a ride around with parole officers on Friday, and see our construction project over there at the, um, the facility, so they're adding, you know, two stories over to the Community Justice Building. Also Juvenile Justice, I was able to stop by there and say hi to some folks. So it was just a great little field trip on Friday morning. And then this morning, um, the, uh, uh, the judge, Judge Fadeley, so our, um, uh, traffic court, and I was able to see that this morning at nine o'clock this morning, so it was a really good opportunity. About twenty people getting kind of, uh, in front of the judge at nine o'clock on Monday morning. It took about an hour for them to, to get through all that, so, uh, you know, great, great services happening here at Deschutes County.
Whitney, I have a question for you. This is on Next Door. It's, they're asking if the county fair charged a hundred and twenty-five per night for parents with four children, four, four-H children showing animals to park on the RV site this year. It, could that possibly be true?
I'm happy to reach out to Fair and Expo staff and coordinate on that, I don't know specifically, Commissioner Dare, but we can follow up and get back to it.
Okay, thank you so much. I know we were trying to work it so that people could park in different spots.
I have a couple of wildfire items, um, first off, I'd like to note that, um, we lost a firefighter here in central Oregon last week. He, he was not, um, from, uh, from the community, but, uh, he, he died, uh, working on wildfire response down by Crescent Lake. And, um, yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that loss, and also, um, to just say that there has been a phenomenal number of, uh, fire starts in the last, uh, week or two, and, um, that the fact that so very few of those have grown into significant-sized fires are, um, is, uh, is an important reminder of how many people are working really, really hard, um, to get, get on those starts before they grow. The, the second item I wanted to mention was that, um, that, I, I'm not sure how much my fellow commissioners tracked this this spring, but there was a very little prescribed fire, prescribed burning that was completed in the Deschutes National Forest this spring, uh, in part because, uh, the state, um, was, um, getting very tight with, um, the amount of smoke that, uh, we are able to put in the air during prescribed fire season, and in part because, uh, the chief of the Forest Service, uh, put a moratorium on prescribed fire across the nation after, uh, one, one fire escaped in New Mexico and, and, you know, blew up into a substantial-sized wildfire. So, um, but on the, on the first concern, you know, the, uh, ODF and, uh, DEQ, essentially placing tighter restrictions on, on smoke emissions from prescribed fire than the federal standards, Clean Air Act and EPA require them to put on. I had a, a, a meeting with, uh, a number of, of people, so, i- involved in prescribed fire in the region on Friday, uh, and we got, uh, DEQ and ODF to, um, offer to essentially try to work on a pilot, you know, one thousand acre, um, prescribed fire on the Deschutes National Forest next spring. This will, like, a, a fire of that size will, uh, almost certainly result in what's called a intrusion. But, um, I am optimistic that we can, you know, an intrusion means, you know, basically smoke in, uh, you know, closer into the city at a level that is, is, uh, you know, below EPA standards. But historically, when those, uh, intrusions have happened from prescribed fire in the last few years, it's been at like two in the morning, when everybody's got their window closed, anyway. So, uh, if, if we can do a good enough job of, uh, raising community awareness, protecting vulnerable populations from smoke when, uh, a, a substantial-sized prescribed fire like that happens, we, we can essentially say, "Yes, there was smoke that came into Bend, uh, in the middle of the night, but, um, it didn't have any health impacts." And if it doesn't have any health impacts, then you should let us do these prescribed fires, because, uh, they will protect people's homes from burning to the ground. So, uh, that, like, to be continued, but that was like a first discussion, and, and I was pleased to hear from the state that they are open to, to doing a pilot, um, pilot burn like that with us. It will mean that, uh, county public health and whoever we hire to become our county, county foresters is going to need to work really closely, uh, on this, in order to make it successful.
We actually always have our window open at two AM, so I would say that people would need to be notified, because that's when we, yeah, we always-
What we're talking about is, is, uh, um, in the West Bend project, immediately adjacent to the city of Bend.
Okay.
In the spring or the fall, where the nights will be cooler, too.
Almost certainly in the spring.
But you know how much better you sleep when the room is freezing to death. That's my, that's my theory. Anyway, um, all right, so this is good. Okay, so why don't, we should, Stephanie, can we close down then? Do we have anything else that we need to bring up in other items? Stephanie?